Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Lenora for Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you for being with us. Appreciate all of the, everyone who's out with us today. As we get started first, we would like to, of course, mention today, we did have the funeral for our very own mayor and city council member for many years, David Barlow. Today, we certainly were so taken back by the loss of David this past week in our community. And please keep his family and everyone in your thoughts and prayers as times continue. I know they're still trying to absorb everything that had happened so quickly with Mayor Barlow, and we do appreciate that. Appreciate the police and the fire today, being there at the service. I know that meant a whole lot to the family and honoring him in such a way for that. So, thank you for you guys coming out, standing outside. I know it was a little warm out there for a little bit, but we appreciate that very much and everyone who was there. So, on that. And also add congratulations to Scott and Wendy who survived the Boston running. Scott ran the five K, a little bit shorter race, but he did well. And Wendy ran the twenty-six point two miles of the Boston Marathon, which is unbelievable, and beat her time. So, she was really, really proud of that. And so, anyway, congratulations to both of them and doing that. So, I know she's got plans to go do some more. So, we'll see. Keep us posted on that, for sure, on it. All right. If you will please, we will now rise for a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First on our agenda tonight, we have our annual report with Police Chief Brent Phelps. We'll present the department's twenty-twenty-three annual report to the council. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I will try to go through this speedily, to not bore anybody with numbers, but I don't want to go so fast that I miss something or don't answer questions from council. As the document that I submit for council or street at the beginning of the year, that is a different document. It goes over what we accomplished. Some of this and some of that overlap. In that document, I put more about people and processes and trends and things we're looking at for the future. This report, our annual report, is more of our data and more of our numbers throughout the year. So, you'll see a very heavy concentration on numbers. But if you have questions, just stop me and we'll go over them. In looking at our different categories that we report, you'll remember back in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, us and the entire nation changed from UCR reporting to what's called NABR, which is Incident-Based Reporting System. And so, we switched to that. So, that has changed some of how our things are captured. But these are the categories. Crimes against persons, those are your assaults in a lot of different capacities. So, we had three-hundred-and-seventy-three of those. That was a six percent reduction from twenty-twenty-two. We had zero murders, homicides in twenty-twenty-three, which is always a good thing. Crimes against society, we had a reduction in that from twenty-twenty-two at four-eleven. Our crimes against property, eight thirty-four was a pretty decent reduction there, almost a quarter, twenty-one percent. Those in your property crimes include a lot of your larcenies, stolen motor vehicles, stolen parts from vehicles, things like that. And you can see, all this is a lot more detailed in the report. You're more than welcome to look through it and ask questions. But these are the main categories. Our calls for service, some of our top areas in calls for service, our animal complaints was down, not a huge amount, but there was a reduction. Our civil disturbances, down a little bit. And our domestics were down a decent amount by twenty-one percent from twenty-three to twenty-two. Our involuntary commitments were up, and that's been a trend since about twenty-twenty. Something in the world and society, when we began to change for years, probably more than a decade, we ran between ninety and a hundred involuntary commitments a year. And about, those numbers started going up in, right at twenty-twenty, and have just been increasing. And this twenty-three was no different, and with more than two-hundred-and-twenty-two incidents. And so, that is where somebody is committed through the legal system and is placed involuntarily at a facility. Our facility, our local facility, is CMH. And there's a piece of that that's a court process through the magistrate system. Doctors sometimes do it, sometimes they initiate, their family members can do it, sometimes law enforcement can do it. That's a little, it's a little harder. They typically like somebody very close to the individual that has knowledge to start that process. But...
Chief, has having the Jonas facility helped? Made an impact? Has that made the process easier? Or is it, or if you're not prepared to answer that, don't worry about it?
No, it's, the Jonas facility is a voluntary facility. So, the people that meet that criteria are at CMH. Now, sometimes, my understanding, there have been individuals that have went in involuntarily and then of their own accord have agreed, I need some additional, and will be transferred into the Jonas.
So, that is voluntary only?
Yes. It is, they are not set up as an involuntary treatment facility. Our overdoses, there was actually a little bit of a reduction in our overdoses that we saw, which is a wonderful thing. We had a hundred-and-forty. That's a thirteen percent reduction from one-sixty-one, and about a six percent reduction in our opioids-induced overdoses. We used Narcan sixty-nine times and could attribute sixty-two people that we saved their life with the use of Narcan.
That's amazing.
You know, it's, it's still, and we've talked about it, I've talked about it, when someone is at that level of addiction, it is very hard. You know, you have somebody that is not breathing blue, and they get brought back. And then, all of a sudden, they want us to leave, and they want to go get high again. And when that, when their addiction is at that point, it is very difficult to get those folks help, until they're ready. And that goes into some of the things society in general across the nation are dealing with, with some of the drug use. But it is scary.
Chief, in that number, would that be sixty-nine different individuals, or some of them repeat?
Some, some of them are repeat. And that sixty-nine is the number of times we use Narcan. And so, sometimes, not a lot, but sometimes, we will use it twice on the same individual at the same incident. And the way it's been described to me, depending on the amount that they have ingested, sometimes Narcan doesn't take effect, and it takes a double dose, so to speak, for it to have an effect on the drug and to bring them back. Sometimes we're unfortunate, we're not able to. The stuff we use is a nasal mist. The product that EMS uses is injectable with a syringe. But it is amazing how it works. I mean, they, there's no pulse, they're not breathing, and, I mean, it's, they come right back most of the time. But I'm glad we're able to use it and hopefully save folks. Just our charges, this is almost three thousand felony and misdemeanor charges across the department. We had two-hundred-and-ninety-five drug charges, seventy different alcohol violations. Our crashes, twelve hundred, that was up from the year before. If you look in the report, our crashes were a little over a thousand last year, so we did see an increase in our crashes. Our vehicle stops was about the same, and then our citations and our warning citations. One of the things that we look at is, you can look at our annual report from years back, and on years where we have more citations, a lot of times our accidents come down. And so, that's why when we try to talk about doing enforcement in our problem areas where we have a lot of accidents, the old saying of blue lights save lives, if we're slowing the public down, it does have an impact on accidents. We've been a little short-staffed this year and have not had as many folks running radar as we've had in years past. So, that is going to be a focus again in trying to look at our accidents and work on those crashes. Investigations, just some numbers, seven-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand recovered property, that includes vehicles that were recovered, over four million dollars worth of illegal narcotics seized, and then seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand in cash and property seized. Our communication center processed over forty thousand processed CAD calls. That's, any call that's entered into the system goes into that number. Our patrol division answered over twenty-four thousand police service calls. Our special checks, house checks, over eleven-thousand call follow-ups. Investigations division worked over eighteen-hundred criminal cases, seventy-two different search warrants, and ten different knock and talks. And our nuisance cases was two-oh-seven. Ninety-seven of those were owner-abided, and thirty of those, the city abided. And, you know, we started last year at council's request, putting those numbers in the quarterly every, every month, and tracking that, just because I know council gets a lot of calls on our nuisance, because it's visible. When somebody's living next door to a problem location, it's visible to the community, and so, it gets attention. So, we've tried to communicate our activity with that better. This is something we put in our report. We feel like it's our way of being transparent. We have to track our traffic stops through the state, but we calculate our enforcement by race and put that out there. What you are typically looking for as a, as a law enforcement agency is you want your enforcement, your arrest, your traffic stops. You want those things to be somewhat close to your demographics of your community. And ours are and have been. But you can see those, and it's pretty consistent with the years. Other numbers, you know, use of force is a, is a very big deal for law enforcement. We calculated every citizen contact that we can document through this report. And over twenty-seven thousand documented citizen contacts. And we know there are a lot more than that. You think about the ten officers that are at the BlackBerry Festival, you know, that gets counted as ten, because we have ten officers at that event. Well, how many public interactions does each one of those cops do during the BlackBerry Festival for six, eight hours? Hundreds. So, we know that number is low of our actual interactions with the public. But out of that twenty-seven thousand that we can document, we had to use force fifty-one times out of the whole year. That's point-one-nine percent, less than a quarter of one percent of our interactions with the public. Unfortunately, we had to use force. And so, my, my statement with that or argument with that is, we were having to respond to somebody's, somebody's actions. And because all those others, you know, we did not have to use force. And so...
Chief, will you define use of force? Because that doesn't mean you physically struck somebody.
That's correct. That is correct. In our force continuum, force, force can be a strike, or pepper spray, or a taser. We also document, if we point a weapon at somebody, that is a use of force. We, and so, in that fifty-one are times where we've had to point a weapon at somebody, give them commands, and then they hopefully follow those commands. But that's important, because we want to be tracking that and keeping up with that, because it is a show of force. And so, out of that fifty-one, I probably should break that down for council. You know, not all of those are a physical strike. Out of that, there's, we have an internal form that is for us, for data, and they have to fill, fill that out anytime they use force. And we go through that system, and that, and then every use of force, every pursuit, there is a chain of command review, and it goes through five levels of supervisors up to me on every use of force documented and every pursuit that we do. And so, that's, it can be time-consuming, but it's, but it's important. And body cameras have helped with that, because all of those incidents are documented, or the majority of all of them, unless there's some issue with the camera on body camera.
All of our officers have body cameras?
All of our officers are assigned body cameras and have been since seventeen, when we went to that. We were actually testing body cameras when the Michael Ferguson incident up north happened. We had three that a company had sent us to test, and we were testing it. That sped it up. Chief Brown was the chief then. Some of you on council probably remember. But that sped up us being able to go ahead, and we got approval through council to purchase cameras for everybody back then. But...
And then they get a request fairly soon.
You are going to get a request fairly soon. We need to revamp. We're very happy with the ones we have, but we've not bought, we've bought very few since we upgraded in seventeen, and a lot of those are out of, end of life. So, we're, we're looking to upgrade and for the future. But yeah, you'll see some of that come. Our extra duty solutions, that's the company that we work with that schedule our off-duty. There's a local number. It rings to them. They have our policy. They schedule it based on our concerns. If somebody asks for something that's outside of our policy, they call us first. We make the decision on whether we're going to do that. They have a app that everybody has, and so, they push it out. And it takes a ton of work off of Captain Stillwell. When we need reports, we can call them, and within minutes, they give us the documentation, and it's easier for us to track. And essentially, the people that are using our off-duty officers are paying for that service. It doesn't cost the police department anything to have them use it. So... But all of our off-duty was over three thousand hours, and that equals about one, almost one and a half officers. So... Other real quick stats, we did twelve ABC permits. We did thirty backgrounds. That's very time-consuming. Hundred-and-twenty-five Crime Stoppers tips. We've got fifty-one thousand pieces of evidence, in evidence that we keep up with and maintain. A lot of that, there is a lot of physical evidence, but there's also a lot of digital evidence that is in that number, too. We had over eight thousand hours in training department-wide, and our professional certificates. We've got thirty-one officers that have either intermediate or advanced. Some other numbers, these are what they are, not as happy with these, but it is, it is what it is. We hired sixteen full-time employees. Six were officers, seven trainees, three telecommunicators. A trainee is somebody that we are paying to go to BLET in a trainee spot. One officer, one telecommunicator transferred to part, from part-time to full-time. And out of the sixteen full-time that were hired, five left within six months. The department lost seventeen employees last year. Nine were full-time, two were trainees that we hired, three were full-time telecommunicators, three part-time telecommunicators. And out of that seventeen, three officers retired, and two of them opted to stay on part-time. And so, you know, we hired sixteen people but lost seventeen. And so, you know, it's a, that is a, a constant. I think my fellow department heads get tired of hearing me in staff meetings when I start talking about our, we're always hiring. But that is a constant work, and it...
What kind of agreement, or do we have anything that we can, when we invest in someone's training, and they stay just a, they don't fulfill the terms of the deal?
Right.
Do we have any recourse?
We, we have looked into that. Currently, the answer to that is no. We do not have a contract legally in the discussions that we have had with attorneys, and even the school government. We, the things we could get reimbursed for, we could get reimbursed for any clothing, any materials, things of like that. The bulk of the money that you have in them is in their salary. You cannot go after the salary, because you're paying them to go to school, and they're fulfilling that, that duty. So, some places have a contract, but the amount that you can go after is very minimal. And so, we, as of right now, have decided not, not to go that route. What I tell them, when we're hiring somebody as a trainee, I tell them, you know, I want you to realize that we, we are investing in you. We are giving you an opportunity, and we are paying you to go to school. And all I ask from you is that you invest in us. You know, I'm not going to say you got to be here for thirty years, but I'd like for you to be here for several, to give us some of that investment back. And, you know, and most of the time, they hang around, but not always. So, but yes.
Do you find that they, when they do leave, do they leave the profession, or do they go to another department?
It's been, we've lost some officers last year to some state agencies. We lost a couple to the highway patrol. We've lost a couple to surrounding agencies. One of our younger officers left and went to the county. We've got one that's going to Catawba County. He turned his notice in, I think, Monday, which we knew that was probably coming. So, we do see some of that. And that's, when, when you hear me talking about, we have to stay competitive, it helps with that. You know, we're not Hickory. Hickory's double our size. You know, they've got a hundred-and-twenty-two cops, I believe. We're right at sixty. And so, you know, we're never going to be exactly where Hickory is, but we need to be close just to be able to compete. We have seen a lot of folks getting out of the profession. We, we had a young man that went to BLET. We, he did his internship, rode with us for three months. And we hired him. We're excited he was there, had a four-year degree. And two weeks in uniform, he walked in one day, and he said, I, this is not for me. And we said, you know, what's wrong? And he's like, I, I'm, I'm not going anywhere else. I'm not being a cop. And we were like, you, you were here as an intern, you know, you knew about it. And he's like, putting on the uniform and having to confront people was a lot different than sitting in the car. And he said, he just, it's not for me. And so, we're trying to figure out how we, how we can expose them before that. But it is tough. So, I'll get off my soapbox. But thank, thank you for the questions. Looking ahead, in twenty-three, we had three senior officers retire. That's Lieutenant Mills. We had Lieutenant Ingram and Captain Brian Smith. That created, ended up creating, with the structure change I did, thirteen employees were promoted into a supervisory role last year. And so, with the retirements, it did create some movement and growth for some of the existing staff, which is a good thing. The other thing we had go on last year, about the time we had those retirements happening, we were blessed that the school system gave us four more positions for SROs in our elementary schools, something I had been hounding Dr. Church for several years about. And we got those. It was horrible timing for the police department, because, you know, we went from four down to about eight down in a matter of a month. But we've gotten all of those positions filled. We have officers in every one of our schools in the city. We're proud of that fact. And so, we're, we're working toward the future. Some other highlights real quick. We implemented our critical incident stress management team. Y'all had a presentation on that. I won't go over that long. But that picture was Lieutenant Bumgarner doing a presentation in Hickory at the regional chiefs meeting back in November about the team. And it's, so far, it's been successful and been used multiple times already. Just some other things. These are annual policies that we're reviewing every year. We're not reviewing the same ones, but we go through, sometimes a law changes, and you have to update or change things. But these are, these are the ones that we reviewed last year. I won't go through each one of those. And then, just some other things we looked at and worked on. Some of the things driven by council with our facilities improvement, you've seen the renovations to the training room. That was completely redid, redone. We completed, took out old carpet in five different offices, put new carpet in, mostly on the detective hallway, and a couple supervisors, and those offices look really well. Put in some new desks when we did that. So, the folks using those spaces be proud of it. Put in some additional card readers. IT helped us with that in a couple different places. And then, we've purchased a new drone unit using forfeiture funds and have used that at several of our events, and that's been a good purchase. That's a lot. I went way longer than I wanted to. Questions?
Any questions from anyone for chief?
I like the silver, but I missed the blue.
Yeah, a little bit of my old-school self misses the, the blue cars. I think the silver turned out well.
It did, yeah.
And we get a lot of compliments on it. But, man, that was a stressful decision, because, you know, that's like the billboard. My guys are riding around, and that's a big deal to the officers.
Oh, yeah.
And we're changing colors and all that. And, oh, I was, I thought, this thing's going to turn out horrible, and it's going to be, you know, that'll be what they run Brent Phelps out of town on. But it turned out, they turned out well. So, if you look over the report, I encourage you to. There's a lot of information in there. If you have questions, please get up with me and be more than happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I will stay close, chief. You're going to be coming right back. Do you have a couple special recommendations tonight, come up annual in May? This first one is the, on behalf of the city council, we'll present the proclamation for the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month throughout the city. So, chief, I'm going to present this proclamation to you. Proclamation Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, May twenty-twenty-four, whereas the growth and popularity of motorcycle riding and touring... Whereas the growth and popularity of motorcycle riding and touring, combined with the many scenic destinations in our state and the year-long riding season, have led to North Carolina having one of the largest populations of motorcycle enthusiasts in the nation. And whereas more and more residents of the city of Lenore are taking up this motor transportation to commute to and from their places of employment. And whereas many motorcyclists undergo specialized training by attending professionally taught motorcycle operator training courses with emphasis on skills, traffic laws, and proper safety equipment. And whereas it is the responsibility of all motors to be aware of motorcyclists and extend to them the same courtesy as any other, as any other vehicles on our roadways. Now therefore, it is resolved that I, as mayor, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month throughout the city of Lenore, witnessed this day, the sixteenth day of April twenty-twenty-four. Chief, thank you. We appreciate that and I'll let you talk about that for a minute if you want to.
Real brief, just thank the mayor and council for this, uh, resolution. Uh, we do have a motorcycling, uh, community, uh, in the foothills of the mountains. We have a lot of folks that come through here riding. And so, anything we can do to, um, educate the public to be aware and look out, uh, for individuals on motorcycles, keeps them safer, keeps us safer. And, uh, uh, I'm sure y'all know folks that ride and, uh, several of my officers on their days off enjoy, uh, that hobby and so, uh, thank you for the resolution.
Thank you. We'll get a picture out when we do, sir.
And our next one, uh, Chief Staines will come up and join me. We'll, uh, this is respectful recognition, uh, to proclamation to chief, Fire Chief Norman Staines proclaiming Saturday, May the fourth as inter, excuse me, International Firefighters Day throughout the city of Lenore. Chief, we're proud to have our firefighters in this community and thank you for all you do every day. Uh, just in the month of May, but all the time and we appreciate that. So, this proclamation is in honor of International Firefighters Day. Is, whereas International Firefighters Day is observed each year on May the fourth to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those that have served in this line of work and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. And whereas regardless of the language a firefighter speaks or the, or the country in which he or she works and resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fire. And whereas firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike. And whereas the demands of firefighting are accompanied by both personal and physical tolls that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. Now therefore, it is resolved that by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lenore, on, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, I do hereby proclaim Saturday, May the fourth, twenty-twenty-four as International Firefighters Day throughout the city of Lenore and encourage all citizens to show support and appreciation to our city, county, and state firefighters who protect our lives and property so diligently throughout the year by remembering past firefighters who dedicated their lives to preserve our safety. Witness where, uh, I have here, set my hand and seal, calls the city the seal, calls the seal of the city of Lenore to be affixed, this, the sixteenth day, too much crazy words. The sixteenth day of April twenty-twenty-four. Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do every day and protecting us in this community. Very proud of that. Added some things to it.
Yeah, I did make a couple of notes because it partly is remembrance because that's where the International Firefighter Day came from. So, we have to look, twenty-twenty-three, eighty firefighters lost their life in the line of duty somewhere in the United States. To date, we've lost twenty-two this year.
Wow.
Um, so something we have to look at, but also have to brag on our staff. We do have fifty-eight wonderful staff members, um, you know. Within that, you know, they're prepared to respond twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Last week, when the rainstorms came through, I walked in and I felt sorry for the one truck. They'd been up every two hours all night cutting trees up. So, they walked in and were zombies, so that's the day you really, really, really appreciate them. But I know they're wonderful staff. You know, with that, last year we responded to three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six calls with inside of city Lenore for service, um, whether it's fire wrecks, whatever. You know, staff within that had response time of three minutes and thirty-eight seconds from dispatched on scene time, so they responded quickly. You know, so we have to appreciate that. Over nineteen thousand hours of training completed by our staff, so their dedication's there, so they're invested. You know, we done fifty-two public events out to our citizens and reached almost five thousand citizens doing some type of fiber prevention activity. So, staff's in the community, they're training daily, um, you know, they're participating. So, I do have to have a big shout-out and thanks to my staff, you know. And with that, thanks to each of you all for your support. Mr. Hildebrand for his support because that's what helps us get our job done, but again, thank you.
The pseudo picture council.
Yeah, mix it up a little. One, two, three. Do a flash or two. All right.
Thank you.
Stay there, council. Photoshop him in? I mean, Photoshop has gotten pretty wild these days. Do all kinds of things. One, two, three. All right, and then a flash. All right.
Thank you, chiefs, for what you do every day and for protecting us and we certainly appreciate that. And I know all our citizens feel the same way, so thank you. It's always an honor to be able to, to recognize, uh, special things like that so that we can let people know what you do every day out there, so. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then. We do not have matters scheduled for public hearings this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items. This is consisting item A are minutes of the city council twenty-twenty-four budget retreat held on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, as submitted. Item B are the minutes of the, uh, city council meeting held on Tuesday, April second, twenty-twenty-four. Item C is a resolution. This is for water and sewer capital improvements plan. Approval of a resolution to adopt the water and sewer fund capital improvements plan to the C I P as presented by city staff. There's a note, this resolution is to meet the requirements of any future funding applications through the N C D E Q Division of Water Infrastructure, S R F Loan or Grant Funding Programs or any other available funding sources. Item D is a contiguous annexation petition. This is for, um, a resolution directing the city court to check the annexation position petition for sufficiency for property located at the intersection of Hoagdale Drive and Providence Lane at being North Carolina PIN number two-seven-five-seven-three-seven-two-eight-two-eight and to call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, May seventh for consideration of approval of the annexation petition. Note, the parcel is within Lenore's extra territorial jurisdiction, zoned as R fifteen, single family, and is contiguous with the Lenore city limits. Item E is the general council agreement, uh, with our city attorney. I don't have to think about this one, man. This is for.
Step away if you want me to.
No, no, no. This is for, uh, our general council agreement between the city of Lenore and the law firm of Wilson, Lackey, Rohr, and Hall, P C, as submitted. Item F is the proclamation for motorcycle safety and awareness month. Item G is for the proclamation for International Firefighters Day on May the fourth. And that is all done on that. So, that's our items for consent agenda discussion, items A through G. I will open it up for any discussion and/or motion when you're ready.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, motion from council member Purdue to approve the consent agenda as presented, items A through G. No other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously, which is, uh, six-oh tonight. Missing, uh, council member Perkins is not with us tonight. All right, we'll move on then to petition and, uh, request of any, uh, citizens. Uh, we do have, uh, gentleman with us tonight, uh, Mr. Gabe Pipes. Gabe is the site director at Fort Defiance and he's going to address the city council regarding some information, uh, from Appalachian State University and, uh, that once existed at the house. And also a V I P reception that will be held on Monday, April twenty-ninth at Fort Defiance. So, we're glad that, uh, Fort Defiance is, uh, back doing well and, uh, hopefully we all, all get a chance to come out and see that, so welcome.
Absolutely. I just want to say good evening to, to mayor and, and counselors. Uh, pleasure to be here. I am, uh, the recently appointed site director out at Fort Defiance. Uh, as many of you know, we're the eighteenth-century home of Major General William Lenore, one of the heroes of the Battle of Kings Mountain and a over-mountain victory man. Uh, marched right down Main Street here on the way down to Kings Mountain. Um, the house was occupied by the Lenore family from seventeen ninety-two all the way until nineteen sixty-one. Since then, it's been run by two nonprofits, Call County Historical Society and then the last forty years by Fort Defiance Incorporated, who I work for. Um, just want to let you all know, a couple of things we have going on out there. Um, this semester, a class at Appalachian State, um, the class is called Anabellum Slavery in Appalachia, has been studying the enslaved population of Fort Defiance. We actually turned over thousands of documents that the family still had. They've aggregated that information and have produced a new exhibit that we're about to put on display out there. If you're familiar with our summer kitchen, we've basically handed our summer kitchen over to them, um, to set up this display and they have produced some pretty exciting, um, new information that, that, um, we're going to be able to exhibit now. We're going to have a V I P reception to, to unveil that exhibit on the twenty-ninth of April at six P M. Want to come out and personally invite all of you, um, to that reception. We'll have some food. Won't be an oyster roast? I got asked that at the county commissioners meeting. Oyster roast could be coming back. Won't be a oyster roast right now, but we will have food out there at that reception on April twenty-ninth. So, please come out and visit. I'll follow this up with an email if you could RSVP to that so that we could plan properly. That, that exhibit, actually in that class, is led by Dr. Lisa McKesson. Some of you may be familiar with her. She's a Lenore native. Um, she knew going into this project that she was a descendant of the Dula plantation. She has learned during this project that she is actually descended from the enslaved population of the Lenore family, so. Really, really gotten some more excitement around the project. Also, a couple more teasers of some things we have coming up in the near future. Appalachian, a separate class at Appalachian has been out doing underground, uh, penetration radar, looking for the original fort. Um, also looking for the slave quarters and, um, the slave cemetery. And they believe they found something. Um, always been, uh, rumored that the fort could have been, uh, you know, closer to Buffalo, could have been close to our cemetery, could have surrounded the house, which we definitely know was not true because William Lenore did not build it. Um, but Appalachian believes they found something. They're going to give us those results very soon, which I'll come back to you and invite you to another reception whenever we're really ready to unveil that. Um, some other upcoming events we have, June the eighth, we're going to have a lunch and learn out at the property. Um, the park ranger from Kings Mountain is going to come out and be a brown bag event, um, to talk about the over-mountain trail, the interrelation between all the properties on the over-mountain trail and give them a little more education on that. The Fourth of July, we're planning right now a, um, a picnic. We're going to do an eighteenth-century style Independence Day, complete with reading of Declaration of Independence, um, a speech that William Lenore did on the, um, the, um, the courthouse steps in Wilk County in, in eighteen-hundred. And we'll have some games out there to mimic an original Fourth of July celebration. There will not be any fireworks anywhere near that house, but, but, but we will, we will, uh, mimic what, what happened back then. Um, also, August tenth, uh, we'll have a local historian named Michael Hardy. He's going to come out there and he's actually going to talk about, um, World War Two as it affected Callow County. Um, so that, that should be a pretty interesting and a different event for us. And then finally, uh, we will bring back our living history days. Uh, those are going to take place August, or excuse me, October first through fourth. Out at the house, we'll have interpreters on the property. We're inviting all the fourth graders in the county. I've sent out emails to all the teachers right now. Um, but you all are certainly welcome to attend all of those events and come out and learn more about Fort Defiance.
Good, thank you. Glad to hear that, uh, things are, are coming back out there. You know, we do miss the oyster roast for sure. That was a great event and, uh, everyone I know would love to have that back again sometime.
Absolutely. The house looks great. Um, while things were shut down during COVID, we decided to do another restoration. Um, it's been repainted, uh, new roof has been put on, shaker-style shingles, uh, that were just like what were on the original house, which were difficult to get accomplished, but our board got it accomplished. So, it's definitely worth coming out and looking at it. Like I said, the house is beautiful right now.
Yeah, we have missed Dr. McKesson many times. Chrissy, I think you know Wesley.
Yes, I do.
Well, yeah, she has spoken at several events and we've been, uh, great historian and a part of the, the Dula family.
It's been a pleasure working with her. She's, she's brought a lot of energy to the project.
Yeah, she's got a lot of energy for that. That's great.
Absolutely.
Any other questions of?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us. All right, we are in the, uh, petitions of any citizens, requests. Is anyone else that would like to address, uh, the council at this time? I know most everybody is our staff and always, we, we thank you as part of it too, so glad you're here. News topic is here. Uh, we're glad to have you with us tonight. Thank you for, uh, covering, I know you've had some good stories lately in the paper and we appreciate that as well. So, thank you for being with us tonight. Anyone else have anything to add? All right, we'll move on. We do not have reports from our boards and commissions this evening. So, we'll move on to report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council tonight, all I have is information items for you. Uh, the first one, the city Lenore Employee Litter Sweep will be held on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, uh, from nine to twelve, again, Thursday, April twenty-fifth. Uh, the Bootlegger One Hundred Bicycle Ride Event will be held on Saturday, April twentieth, from eight A M. to six P M. And that will start and end in downtown Lenore. Uh, the Lenore Bicycle Festival will be held on Saturday, April twentieth, in downtown Lenore as well. That's going to be held from ten A M. to four P M. And you can find additional information on the city's website, citylenore.com/events. Uh, the Board of Adjustments will meet on Monday, April twenty-second, five-thirty in the chambers. Uh, the committee as a whole will meet on Tuesday, April twenty-third, eight-thirty A M. Uh, it will be a brief meeting because I know folks are heading to Winston-Salem. Uh, also, the league, as I just mentioned, the league will be having their city vision conference in Winston-Salem, April twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, at the Benton Convention Center. I know most councils are going to attend that. And then also, N C D O T Spring Litter Sweep will be, uh, ending on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. The public's encouraged to participate in litter sweep pickup throughout the state. And lastly, the foothills regional airport authority will meet on Wednesday, May first, at noon, at the airport for their monthly meeting. And that's, that's all I have. Unless there's questions.
Any questions of any meetings with Mr. Hildebrand? All right, thank you. We'll move on to, uh, report recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Nothing now, but I do have something to discuss in close session.
We have something in close session. Okay, thank you. And as far as our mayor's office, I don't have anything at this time. We, uh, we also, under the council members, we do have the voting delegate thing that, uh, I think that, well, I've already been appointed to the, to that.
Do we need an alternate? We, we normally appoint an alternate as well. Do we need an alternate?
You could do one already.
Not make John Bill to be the alternate to the, to the mayor for voting delegate. And, and make a motion to approve the mayor as, as delegate.
Thank you. The reason we had to do it early is because they had to vote before this meeting. There was some voting that already had to be. I bought, I had to vote for the.
Well, then maybe we don't need to appoint it. Well, we could still appoint an alternate for future voting.
That's right, because you know, there'll be a, the meeting down there, you'll have something. You had to vote for the, the, uh, board ahead of time, the way it works. You had to vote for the board ahead of time, the way it works with it anyway.
That's right. We've already been notified who's on that board.
That's it, there you go. All right, so we have a motion that we make, the mayor as the voting delegate and Mr. Bill as the alternate delegate for the city vision in Winston-Salem in April 23rd through the 25th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, we will then go to, I don't think we have anything else. We have, we'll enter, we need to enter into a closed session as authorized by North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11, subsection A, subsection 3. To consult with our city attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege, council will consider and give instructions to the attorney regarding the possible settlement of a existing lawsuit. The parties to that existing lawsuit are David Williams, Doris Williams, and Crest Com Bank. It is expected that the city council will take action in open session at the conclusion of the closed session. So entertain a motion to go into closed session.
The motion to go in this closed session.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Thomas, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We are going into, in just a minute, in closed session. Thank you for being with us. We will be back probably to have a vote on this in open session, but you don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Can you give me two minutes to hand chief something?
Yeah. Yeah.
You gotta hand him something.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ralph, you're, you voted for coming out of closed session. Is that all right?
Yes, I'm all right.
Okay. All right, we're out of closed session, we're back in open session, and I will entertain a motion for the action that we just discussed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the settlement in the city of Lenore versus Williams and Crestcom Bank, Caldwell County File Number 21 CVS 1082, as follows. Deposit a total of $55,000 with the Caldwell County, with, with the clerk's office. Authorize the Williamses to widen their driveway access as described in the recent report from McGill Associates.
Okay, you heard the motion from council member Presswood concerning the action with the Williams Tire Building on Highway 18. Any other discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have all but Mr. Burdick, one day. That passes.
5-1.
Thank you.